I call this meeting of the Northeast Independent School District to order. The time is 5:34. Item one, school board candidate orientation. A, the Board of Trustees and the superintendent's staff will meet with candidates for a position on the school board in an orientation session. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for attending today's school board orientation, candidate orientation. Before we begin, I would like for us to do introductions. So what we're going to do is, I will start, we'll go around the dais, and we're going to say our name, and then why either we are running, or why we have run in the past. But I would like to limit it to two minutes. So I'll start. I'm Shannon Grunau, I'm the president. I've served on the board for eight years. Prior to that, I was a PTA volunteer for 11 years. I had been a PTA president. I had served on three different boards, including the council PTA. And so I ran for the school board because it seemed like the next logical step in my service to the district. I'm running again because I think, or I know, we are making positive changes in the district that are affecting all of our students. And I want to continue working with Dr. Mica and the staff to continue to move the needle, and to do what is best for all students in our district. So, Mr. Hasso.
Thank you. My name's Tony Hasso. I serve as the Board Vice President from single-member District Six, or the Reagan attendance area. I'm in my fourth year completing my first term. I chose to run primarily because I was approached by my predecessor, Letty Bresnahan, who previously served and last served as Board President. She was aware of my involvement in the district, which included being involved with PTA at the home campus, the watchdog program, being a member of the class of Leadership Northeast, and also serving on the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. So she too, very similar to President Grunau, figured that this might be a logical next step, in addition to the fact that I have two young kids in the district. I have an eighth grader at Bush, and a fourth grader at Stone Oak Elementary. So I did see this as another logical progression in my service to the district. You know, aside from just wanting to be involved in decisions that will affect my kids, helping to shape and improve the district as a whole for, you know, our 64,000 or so students that we have in this district.
Ms. Hughie. Good evening. I'm Sandy Hughie. I'm the Secretary of the Board, and I've been on the board for 20 years. It's been an honor and a privilege to be a part of this incredible team. The reason I first joined the board was, I was pushed by some of my community friends. I was very active, like Shannon was, in the PTA, and had been a PTA president, and every other office I think that there is in the PTA, including part of the council also. So I got to know our community very well that way. My two youngest children are Lee graduates, so I'm very familiar with that cluster, but my single-member district is the Churchill area. I'm often asked why I've stayed on the board, and it's a very thoughtful question, and I've tried to give it a thoughtful answer. And people have heard me say quite often that this can often be a heartbreaking and a soul-searching. I don't even call it a job. In my mind, it's a calling. Although there's a lot of heartbreak, the things that we are privileged to see from our staff, from our teachers, from our children, fills my soul. So I've found that it has made me more deeply involved at multiple levels, and it gives me multiple views of multiple situations. It's made me listen, it's made me care, disagree gracefully, and it's made me learn. So it is a distinct honor to be here.
I'm Sandy Winkley, and I am trustee of District Seven, which is the Madison District. I am an NEISD product. I went to Serna Elementary, Garner Middle School, and MacArthur High School. I have been volunteering since I could walk in this district. When my husband and I got married and came back to San Antonio, we wanted to be back in the Northeast Independent School District, so I live about a mile and a half from where I grew up. My children both went to Churchill High School. I served in PTA, like Shannon and Sandy and Tony. I was president of PTA in the elementary school level, vice president in the middle school level, and president in the high school level. I also was very privileged to serve on the CIC committees for all of those, at all three levels, which is the Campus Improvement Committee, and also within the district and the district improvement, just, I'm sorry, the District Educational Improvement Committee. So I feel like the background that I had, both within PTA and on the campus level and the district level, was kind of the same, a nice transition into serving on the board. This is going into my third year in May, and I'm very involved in my community, have always been involved in my community. I love NEISD. I'm so proud of our executive staff, and of Dr. Mica and the board that we have. We work together very well. We're very, it takes grace, and it takes commitment, and I'm just very proud to be a part, proud to be a part of it.
I'm Teri Williams. I represent District Two on the board, single-member District Two, and that includes the Roosevelt High School cluster. My story is similar to Mr. Hasso's, as I was approached by my predecessor, who had served on this board for about 22 years. I previously served on the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee, as well as the Northeast Educational Foundation. I'm a product of the public school system, but San Antonio ISD. I have two sons, who are in their late twenties now, and I don't look like it right now. Thank you. But they are products of Roosevelt High School. Graduated from Roosevelt, 2009 and 2011. I've lived in San Antonio since I was five, born on the island of Galveston. So I've been in this community for a good number of years. I won't say how many, but a good number of years. My background is, I wasn't involved in PTA, but I've been involved in the community for the past 30-some years, but from an economic development standpoint, and a business standpoint. I've served on a lot of boards in San Antonio, chambers, and social groups, and other groups. Sometimes folks call me a board addict, but I'm committed to serving my community. I think it's very important to serve your community. That's why I accepted the challenge to be on this school, on this school board, which I feel is very important. At the time, I had an opportunity to serve as trustee on CPS Energy Board. So I selected this board, and I'm glad I did, because I feel that I'm truly making a, participating in making a difference in the lives of our students. And I can see that each year, that, each graduation that we attend. So you're seeing the product of your policies, or work and commitment. So I'm glad of the choices that I've made with this great team.
We're glad you made this choice. Mr. Byer.
Good evening, everybody. My name is David Byer. I'm the current District Four, single-member District Four trustee, which is the MacArthur cluster. I live in the Northwood community. I have two kids. One goes to MacArthur, one goes to the Magnet Program at Kruger, which is a Kruger School of Applied Technologies. My wife is also a product of Northeast. She went to Windcrest, Garner, MacArthur. I grew up in Austin, public school kid. Went, went.
Got here as fast as I could.
Went to Texas A&amp;M, got a bachelor's in landscape architecture, so that's my actual real job that allows me to do some of these things. Over the years, I've volunteered at Northwood Elementary. I've, as a watchdog, PTA stuff, grounds cleanup guy, carnival volunteer, whatever it is, helping out at Kruger Middle School right now a little bit. My wife's currently the PTA president, so that keeps us busy in that regard as well. And I'm also on the Northeast Educational Foundation, like Teri and Sandy Hughie, where we help raise money for teacher grants every year for innovative projects. I'm proud of what, being a part of this group for the past year. I've been on the board for a year. I was appointed last January, and so I have filled out, or served the term for Jim Wheat, who was my predecessor. I was not looking for this. He asked if I'd be interested, and so I kind of went through the interview process and found that I really liked doing this. So I'm proud of the decisions that we've made over the last year, and working with this team as a collective group. And I think, running this coming May, three of the things that have really popped in my head are sort of the mental health aspect of continuing what we've been doing that for the district, for our students and teachers, providing all those kind of things, hiring and retaining the best teachers that we can get, and then also really looking at classroom innovation, and what can we do to prepare our kids for the future, in college, or whatever they're going to do outside of high school. So I'm looking forward to hopefully doing this for another four years, and serve the community, and work with a great team of people. So that's it. Thanks.
Ms. Leos.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Omar Leos, and I represent single-member District Three, which is the Lee Cluster. And I am a product of the public school system, and like Ms. Williams, I'm a product of SAISD. My parents are lifelong, or were lifelong educators. They're both retired public school teachers. And myself, I am a, this is my 22nd year in public education. I am an administrator for Hardendale ISD. My sister is also a teacher, a public school teacher. I come from this long family tree of educators, public school educators, to be real specific. They have been advocating for public students and public schools their entire life, and I have two as well. I've been living in Northeast ISD for the last 11 years. Previously, I was living by the Churchill area, and, which was great, and now I'm in the Lee area by Colonial Hills Elementary, which is a fabulous and great neighborhood. You know, I've been appointed since November, so I'm the youngest person here, and it has been a very great experience, and the decisions that we have been making are really good. And I've been, I'm honored that the board has chosen me to fulfill the rest of the term until May. I've decided to run for the position because I feel that someone living in the community needs to invest in the community, needs to invest in the families and the students that live there. And being an educator myself, I can bring an educator's perspective to our discussions and to our choices that we are making, and I feel that we have done really, really well in my short little period of time here, and I want to hope to continue that, and to serve the students and the families of Northeast, because I think that they deserve the best, and I think that it's our duty to create these outstanding citizens for the future.
Thank you. Mr. Gilson.
I think I saw some folks, IT guys, saying we've got to get this close out.
Yes, thank you.
My name's Simron Gilson. I go by Sim for short, and I live in the district now for about a year and a half, a little bit more than that. My wife's family is from the district. She went to MacArthur, and her family went, her brother's sister went to MacArthur. I've got a big family, youngest of seven. The reason I'm running is because I care. I care about the kids, and that they get a good, the best education we can offer. I care that, about the families that these kids come from, the parents, the community. We're not just educating kids, right? We're part of the community. Kids belong to the community with their parents. I believe in the power of education. My mom always said, "Knowledge is power." My mom grew up as a migrant farm worker, so did her sisters, my grandma. They grew up in the Valley of Texas, picking cotton mostly. My dad grew up on a farm in Ohio, the oldest of nine, very, very poor, Mennonite family. Military brought him here, Military City USA brought them together. I've had a great education growing up. I owe a lot of that to my mom. Parental involvement's key. I appreciate that, the hard work that my parents put into my education. I've got two little ones now, a seven-month-old boy and a two-year-old girl. They are the light of my life. They bring so much joy to me, and I'm running for them, too. I'm running for them so that this district can be the best for these children of mine, and for all the children in the community, to provide a good education and a whole education. So I like the words that Ms. Williams used, "making a difference." You know, I have a heart for service and a heart for education, and I believe I can make a good difference for the district.
Thank you. Mr. Piercy.
I guess the mic's going close. Dylan Piercy, I live in the Reagan Cluster. Tony, I have nothing against you. It's not why I'm running for the spot. It just happens to be where I live. I've lived there for six and a half years. Ms. Grunau, we've actually corresponded back and forth, back in the day when there were some issues with Lopez and algebra, and I really respect the way you responded. I think we both were shocked to find some things out about the way things work in the school district. I was a teacher for seven years. Actually, taught four years in Northeast ISD and Churchill. Ms. Hughie, you judged for me when I was the debate coach at Churchill, and at our tournament every year. And I always respected that, and, you know, I'm at the point now where I'm an attorney in town, and I'm not working with kids in the classroom, but I feel like I can work for kids from the boardroom. And, you know, that's the primary motivation for running for this position. I have two children who are seniors at Reagan. They'll graduate this year. I have a stepson who is a fifth grader at Vineyard Ranch, and then I have a son who's a freshman in the Reagan Band. Some of you that have children in the Reagan Band understand what kind of commitment that is. And, you know, my perspective is that I, you know, I understand where the teachers are coming from. I feel like I have a pretty good grasp of where the kids are coming from at this point, as we evolve with technology. Having children that are just graduating from high school and children that are in elementary school, I'm seeing the differences between how they expect technology to play a role in their education. And also, I was in the classroom not that long ago, and I saw what teachers go through dealing with these kids and expectations. In the Reagan Cluster, as you all know, we just had a lot of drama recently, and I think that you guys did a great job handling that, as did administration, but it is a changing time, and I do feel like I have a different perspective, maybe, that some people don't have, just because of the age of my kids, the recency of being in the classroom, and now the ability to give back in a different way. And so that's why I chose to run for the board.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. McGinty.
Okay. Tell me if I get this mic, okay? All right. My name's Ione McGinty, and I am a product of NEISD. I went to Jackson Keller Elementary, Nimitz, and to Robert E. Lee High School. I attended UT Austin, and then I spent 10 years in the banking industry. Currently, I live in the house that I grew up in, so I've been in NEISD for over 40 years, close to 45. But my community is very important to me. One of the biggest compliments I got is from, actually, I'm back in school right now at SAC. The school counselor said, "Ione, you are a born advocate." So that was like such a compliment to me, because my neighborhood is very important to me, and the people, and the kids in it. I am a mom of six, and I have one special-needs son, and I have been an educator for the past 28 years, as I have home-educated my students. So my four oldest are either graduated from college. I have two in community college right now. And I would just like to see a return to the community feel in my neighborhood, and that is kind of a driving force. I grew up where everybody knew everybody, everybody had each other's back, and so that is just kind of a passion to me, is my neighborhood. And my neighbors joke and call me the mayor of the street, because they know I have their back. And so anyway, I'm happy to be here, and I just, I'm a common-sense gal, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holsher.
Evening, y'all. My name is Joseph Holsher. I'm a lifelong resident of District Four. David and I actually live in the same neighborhood, and we may have to talk to Jim, because Mr. Wheat was a friend of mine that I actually tried cases with, and he's part of my motivation for running for the board. Before I became an attorney, and I'm going to join that club here today, I was a teacher at a Texas Military Institute. I taught speech and debate. I was a national, or, I'm sorry, a Texas State Debate Coach champion during that short period of time. I'm now a professor at Our Lady of the Lake University. I work with first-generation college students to prepare them for law school. I have two master's degrees in addition to my JD, and I'm one of the top-rated lawyers in San Antonio, and a managing partner of my law firm, most well-known for intoxication and DWI law, because I author one of the major textbooks used by lawyers in Texas. However, my practice is primarily as a child welfare lawyer. So some of the boards that I've sat on in the past include the Retention Committee for the DA's office, determining or advising on which ADAs would be fired or retained by our new DA. And I currently sit on the fundraising committee for the Children's Court. The vast majority of my cases involve children who are abused, neglected, or killed while in the care of the state. So children's issues have long been something close to my heart, because my sister and I unfortunately had some contact with the courts when we were younger. It was a very different time. But it's, this is a sort of natural transition for me, as I've reached a point in my career where I can give back more to my community. And having been treated well as a graduate of MAC in '94, and now having three kids of my own, an eight-year-old, and two seven-year-old twins, I would like to hopefully contribute to NEISD and make sure that it continues its long tradition of excellence, so that the kids in our district don't become the kids that I have to deal with in court. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hilliard.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Steve Hilliard. I live in District Six. I'm a proud graduate of NSD, Roosevelt, class of '92, Windcrest, and Ed White before that. Served in the military for 20 years, retired. My wife and I, she's also a graduate of this district. We moved back home. We chose this district because we love this district. We know how good it is, what an opportunity it is to be able to come back here. And I'm at the point in life as well, it's an opportunity to give back and serve the community. Did the watchdog things, some other stuff, helping the PTA with free time, but I think it's just an opportunity to give back to the community. We all have different talents and skills, and if selected or elected to the position, it's just an opportunity to serve your family, friends, and neighbors, and the greater good of the 65,000-plus students in the district that go through this, you know, our system here at NEISD, which has a great reputation. So just hoping to help contribute and give back in whatever way possible, and the real reason I'm running is for that community service aspect, quite frankly. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Osborne.
Hi. I'm Mike Osborne. I've lived in the Lee District, which is, I guess now, my house is now in the Churchill District, for 37 years. And my kids went to Lee, my two girls went to Lee, and my grandchildren are now in the district. And I'm retired. I'm a teacher at heart, though I've never, because that's been my job as an engineer, is to teach the customers, teach other engineers, and to teach contractors the right way and the wrong way to do things. I think I can contribute. I've been active in PTA with the girls in high school, active in the neighborhood, and active in my profession. And I'm active now in my church, and doing Meals on Wheels, and St. Vincent de Paul, and Knights Columbus, which is involved in all sorts of other, all sorts of activities. And I'm just looking forward to contributing and making Northeast better than it is. Not that it's not good, but as I was telling the pastor the other day, he asked, "Mike, how are you doing?" And I said, "I'm good." And he said, "No, Mike." He said, "Only God is good." And I said, "Well, you got me there." I then returned, and I said, "I'm trying to be perfect." And we all know that we can't be perfect, but if we don't strive to be perfect, then we're, we might hit the mediocre spot, and that's not where we want to be." Thank you.
Thank you, y'all. So our goal today is to provide you with an overview of the roles and responsibilities of a board member. A school board member is the ultimate volunteer position within a school board. Board members do not get paid. It's truly a service to the community and a labor of love. TASB, Texas Association of School Boards, describes school board service as "one of the purest and most important forms of public service one can provide in a community. It's very rewarding, but it's also a very time-consuming job. It requires a high level of dedication and teamwork." I would like first now to watch a short video from TASB that provides insight into what a board member does. It's a long video. It's about 22 minutes, but I think we're only going to watch about five minutes. Thank you, Deb.
The first topic for consideration is time. The time commitment is essential before ever filing for candidacy. Beyond the time required for attending board meetings, there are other points to be mindful of in terms of time obligations.
Just be prepared to commit that time if you want to be an effective board member. You need to be prepared to go ahead and commit some time for the progression of the district, because that's what you're striving for as a school board member. So you need to be prepared to go ahead and know how to manage that time, because you're going to be called to do various things just because you are on the school board. And also, time to prepare for school board meetings, so you're doing your research of your board packets, being informed, and not just coming in blind to your board meetings. You need to be informed and also be educated as to what's going on in your school district.
While Ted refers to the amount of time spent in preparation just for the monthly board meeting, there are many other obligations that will now dominate your time. As a board member, it is essential to be present and visible in the district at school functions. It's not enough to just go to the band concert that your child plays in. They're all your children now, and it's important to students and their parents that you are interested enough in the district functions to attend a variety. So whether it's stock shows, ballgames, academic banquets, or elementary music programs, you need to make an appearance. Local events and meetings will fill a good portion of your time, but board service also requires training.
To be a good board member takes a lot of time commitment, more than people expect. They think they're going to show up for a monthly board member meeting, and it's much more involved. There's some study, and that first year is a huge learning curve. It takes, you really want to be a lifelong learner if you're going to get into the board service business, because it takes a lot. That first year, you have policy, and budget, and personnel, and you really have to have time to study those issues and know what's going on to be a good board member.
The Texas Education Code requires that board members meet a minimum number of hours of training. The first year is extensive, with a steep learning curve to get up to speed in all those areas Margaret mentioned. But each successive year requires ongoing training as well. Much of this training takes place at TASB conferences, seminars, and conventions, so of course it involves travel. The payoff there is the time it allows you to get to know your colleagues on the board and to network with others from across the state. But it is a time commitment nonetheless. Once a candidate decides to dedicate themselves to the time commitment, there are other considerations that begin to arise. Let's start with the question of why you're running for the board. What was the motivation for that decision?
If you want to choose to be on the school board, you have to come with a servant's heart. And I feel like that most people, when they begin the idea of board heart. And I feel like that most people, when they, when they begin the idea of board service or serving on the school board, begin with the idea that they're going to change the world in some way. One of the things that's kind of my aha moment is to realize that as a board member, you are one of seven and one of a team of eight, which is seven plus a superintendent. And that we're all functioning within a system in the benefit of kids. And so, not one person, any of him or herself, can change anything dramatically overnight.
I really like Clay's point here. If you're going to choose a run for the school board, a positive focus is a must. About 80 to 85% of a school's budget is set because of legal and personnel considerations. So, no individual is going to dramatically impact a district's focus.
If you have an agenda, you're subject to be disappointed upon being elected to the board. You are there or elected by your constituents to be an advocate for all of the students within the district. And you're a part or one vote of a member of a governing body. And individuals that have a predisposed agenda, kind of does those students a disservice because you're there for the students. And if you are focused on one thing, you are unable to see the big picture. And the big picture are the students.
Thank you, Deb. You all have a copy of the agenda, so if you want to watch that full video, the link or the, how to get to that is on there. So, I would like to reiterate some key points from what we just watched. The first thing is the time commitment. It takes time to prepare for our meetings. We get an agenda packet the Friday before the board meeting on Monday. We get large presentations usually a week before that. So, there is a lot of reading that's involved, and we do expect board members to come prepared to, well-prepared to the meetings to discuss and be able to take action on the items that are on the agenda. We have at least two board meetings a month, sometimes more. They are on Monday nights. But we, we have had to call special-called meetings because we need to do personnel. We've had 7:30 a.m. meetings. We've had lunch meetings. We've had meetings on a Thursday night. So, we, as a board, have to work hard together to come up with a time that works for all of us to have board meetings because we do like to all be at the board meeting if we're having to vote on an agenda item. During our budget season, which is May and June, we probably have six board meetings. And we have them about once a week on Monday nights. And then there will be a week that we will have two board meetings, a Monday and a Thursday. So, that budget season is busy time. We also attend all graduations. We have nine graduations. Eight of them are in a four- or five-day period. We have two graduations a day, typically for three days in a row. Those are long days and big time commitments. We get invited to attend a lot of school events. And we, while we can't go to all of those, they are typically during the day. And we do like to have several board members attend those events. It's important to the schools because we represent everyone. And so, while I represent the Johnson Cluster, I don't think I said that at the beginning. You know, I go to everything as much as I can all around the district. So, we do try to emphasize attending as many of those as we can. We also have summer leadership that is through TASB. That is a Thursday and a Friday, and that is in San Antonio. But then we also attend the annual TASB convention, and that's a Thursday through Sunday. And that is either in Austin or Dallas. And we, we all attend that as a group. And then, they also mentioned, as a new board member, you will have a certain number of training hours that you will have to attend sessions to get those hours to meet that required training. Does anybody on the, up here have anything to add to what I've said about the time commitment?
There we go. One thing, one thing I didn't mention is I do have a full-time job at UTSA downtown. I feel I could not have done this while my boys were still in school. Because as, as Mrs. Grona said, the time commitment, you know, and when I got on the board, when I was approached, and I'm thinking, "Oh, okay, Monday nights, yes, at night," or, you know, "An additional meeting, oh, yes, at night." But just as she mentioned, I'm like, "Oh, okay, we have a meeting? Oh, okay, we have a meeting." So, I'm glad I have the flexibility with my employer to allow, again, to allow that flexibility to come and go, you know. And the position that I'm in at UTSA allows me to come and go as well. So, I just wanted to ditto that. You know, it was an awakening. Still glad I'm here, but it is, she's not exaggerating. It is a time commitment.
Did, Ms. Huey?
I think the time commitment is such, such an important part of what we were hearing just now. In my case, I actually made the decision about five or six years ago to give up my paid job after a long discussion with my husband, and we decided to go single income. Not that it hasn't had its challenges, but this became, like I said earlier, this, this became such a calling to me that I also took on additional responsibilities. So, there's so many opportunities for us as trustees to take on additional things. So, you, servant's heart is probably even, that's just the tip of the iceberg. In addition, they were talking about TASB. I'm a TASB director. I am honored by my fellow trustees to be their delegate to the TASB board, and that's 40 members from around the state. I'm also a founding member of the Bear County Coalition of School Boards. I am steering committee for Go Public. And like David mentioned with Terry, I'm also on the foundation board. So, there is, it is what you make it, and we have all chosen to make it. I'm sorry. A huge part of what our lives are.
I do. The other thing that I think we failed to mention is, is the communication. We are in constant communication with Dr. Micah and with each other, and it's not there, with this responsibility, this position, it is all hours of the day. And oftentimes, having to respond all hours of the day. And where it is taxing, I, because you're tied, you know, the communication needs to be open. It's not a burden because I am in the same boat. My children are both in college, and I work for a company that I have flex hours. But I work over 40 hours a week. I work for CPA firm. But I'm allowed to do this job and attend events during the day and come to meetings whenever I need to and respond when I need to because of my job. It's not because it's easy. It's, it, it's more than just attending events and sitting at the dais twice, twice a month. It's a, it is a big commitment. I volunteered quite, I didn't work when my children were not in school. I came on the board when my son was graduating, my youngest was graduating from high school. I was inducted in May, and he came, he graduated in June. And that, at that point, I went back full-time. So, I vol, that was my job. Volunteering at the school was my job. And I volunteered about 30, 40 hours a week, depending on what activities. He was in multiple activities, and I served on various committees within Churchill High School. And so, it didn't, I didn't skip a beat because I didn't know any different. The only thing that changed is that I now, the job is that it's 40 hours, but the volunteering part of it stayed the same. It is a really big commitment. And I think Terry is right. I don't know, I mean, Tony and David make it, you know, they make it look easy. Their jobs are very flexible as well. So, they're, they're able to participate when we need them to be. But I don't know that I could have done it when my children were in school. I don't. That's a really, that's my honesty, honest, being sincere and honest. I'm not trying to discourage you in any way, but I really feel like you should go home and talk to your, if you have spouses, talk to your significant other and talk about that commitment and what it is to, to be a servant in this position. It is demanding.
Anything else? Okay. The board member in the video also talked about how you're one of seven board members, and one board member cannot change the district's focus. An individual board member has no power. And really, the only power that we have as a board is to take action on an agenda item at a duly-called meeting. So, anything outside of a duly-called meeting, we, we're just individual board members with no power. You are elected to advocate for all students, all 65,000 students of the district. And you cannot make decisions that only impact a small group of children. We have to make decisions that affect a variety. You know, our district is extremely diverse. And so, when we're making decisions, we're making them, that is for the greater good of all of our students. So, you can't just, you know, I can't just make a decision because it's for the good of Johnson High School. I have to do it for, you know, the entire district. And so, sometimes that becomes a challenge. But we have to make sure that we're focused on the big picture. Anybody have anything to add to that? Okay. On, you know, that you're one of?
Yes. Do. I actually do. I think this is really important. And having served on particularly, particularly the DEIC Committee, when you, as a, as a parent and a volunteer on the other side, and if you're not involved in a, in a committee where you receive information from executive staff and it's presented to you by the district, it's easy to say, "If I were over there, I would do, I would be doing this." It was such an eye-opener. It truly was. To serve on those committees, there is a lot of work that's done for years. Decisions that are made, it's because meetings have been held and research and, and presentations. It's a process, a two-year process before it even sometimes comes to us for a vote and we're presented with the information. And so, recognizing that the, that the decisions you're making are based on solid educational, professional decisions. And where it may not be something that I would want for my family or for my children, like Ms. Grona said, for her campus, but you really have to take it personal because you cannot bring your personal beliefs to this place. There's, there's no room for it. You have to take the adminis, the information that's given to you. You have to look at the whole of the district, all 65,000 students, and recognize what's best for all of them, not just for your own.
Just, just to reiterate when I said earlier, that I probably could not have done this when my boys were in school. In addition to that, my husband's job sent him to work in Utah for nine years. Yeah. He's back, of course. We'll be celebrating 30 years of marriage in July. Thank you. But because, you know, I would have been, and I have to say, probably would have been biased just focusing on Ed White Middle School, which is the middle school they went to, or Roosevelt High School. Or, you know, it, sometimes it's hard to separate yourself when you're going to an event or when you're going to visit your kids at their school, that, oh, you're not a board member now. You're a parent. And, you know, having that separation sometimes can be difficult. And then now, of course, sitting here, I'm not just concerned about what's happening. Although, when we introduced ourselves, we introduced ourselves as representing single-member districts, but we represent the entire district. So, I'm not just concerned about what's happening at Roosevelt or Ed White or Montgomery or Kruger. I'm concerned about what's happening at Reagan. I'm concerned about what's happening at Johnson or East Taro Hills or MacArthur because they're all our kids. And we have to put on that, you know, that hat of the district and not just our single member. So, I just wanted to add that.
Okay. Thank you. The board has, oh, I'm sorry.
Shannon, can I add one thing to that, too, that we haven't really, one of the things that we, that we kind of skip over sometime in our role as a trustee or that people may not be aware of, is we have what's called a line of governance. Our job is not to run the district on a day-to-day basis. We hire. Our major responsibility as a trustee is to hire the person to run the district. And probably that's one of the biggest blessings sitting at this dais right now is Dr. Sean Micah. And we are thrilled and excited with the new direction that he's taking for the district. And it's been a wonderful ride. But that doesn't mean that it is our job to usurp his job. So, our responsibility is to, to vote on governance issues, to vote on policy, and to let the administration do their job. I kind of feel like they're professional, and they are here because they have put their hearts and their souls into our children. They certainly don't do it for the money because they could be getting probably 10 times as much as they do in the corporate world. So, we're very fortunate to have that. So, it is not our job to run the district. And if a parent comes to us with a concern, our first responsibility, we do not answer them as a trustee, as, as a, we immediately turn the situation over to Dr. Micah. That's, that's not just good policy. In one way, it's good ethics and it's, it's reflected in the Education Code. So, to that extent, it's almost the law. So, that's, we have a lot of laws and a lot of rules that we live by and that we have, that we should live by.
So, you kind of stole a little bit of my next topic.
I'm sorry.
We have three main jobs. Adopt the budget, adopt policy, and oversee the superintendent's contract and evaluation. The board policies and procedures are the governing documents by which the school district runs. The policy development is focused primarily on the goals and desired end results for students rather than the daily operations. A careful, orderly process is used in examining the adoption of new policies or the revision of existing policies. Each policy, whether new or existing, undergoes two readings in a public meeting before we can adopt it. And that enables us to ask questions and have revisions made before we've adopted the policy. All of our board policies are online so that the community and staff can see it. Another responsibility is the adoption of the budget. As I mentioned earlier, we have a series of board meetings in May and June where we have the budget study sessions. These sessions outline the district's current financial needs as well as the future expenses and revenues. During the budget study sessions, we discuss the general fund, debt service fund, and school nutrition service fund. And we also discuss compensation and employee benefit plans. We also set the tax rate. And hear me when I say tax rate. We do not set the property value. That is the Bear Appraisal District. But we do set the maintenance and operation tax rate that is used to fund the daily operations of the district. And then we also set the interest and sinking or debt service tax rate that's used to fund the principal and interest on the outstanding voter-approved bonds. The third, yes, we have reduced our tax rate. The third primary responsibility is to hire and evaluate the superintendent. And we oversee his contract and we conduct evaluations. And the board policy outlines the procedures for that evaluation. And then we also perform a self-evaluation as a board to measure our success. To guide our work is the highest ethical manner, and to preserve public trust, we follow a code of ethics. The code of ethics outlines principles for equity, stewardship, conduct, integrity, commitment, and student-centered focus. And as a board member, we have strict confidentiality requirements. Everything discussed in closed session is confidential. And there will be times when we will get information and we cannot tell anyone. There's a great amount of trust among the board members regarding keeping confidential information. Social media, we're all active on social media, but we're also individuals. And we have to be careful because people see us as board members. So, we cannot post inappropriate pictures. We can't say inappropriate things. And we have to hold ourselves And we have to hold ourselves to a higher standard than a general public member would do. As a parent, at times, it's difficult to put our own situations and circumstances aside for the greater good of all students. But that is what we are called to do in service to the district and the people who elected us. So now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Micah.
Good evening. So before I start going through a whole list of all the other things, let me tell you just a little bit about myself. I've been married to my wife now for 25 years. I met her when I was 14 years old. There is no life outside of that lady. She is a wonderful person. We have two students, or two kids together. My kids go to Reagan, one's at Reagan, so I understand the band. Doesn't play an instrument, but danced. And so that is a huge level of commitment. And my other one is an eighth grader at Lopez. Both my folks, both my parents, own businesses. My dad's owned a business for 58 years. My mother owned a restaurant for 40. So I grew up in the business industry. And so I have a different, a little slightly different perspective when it comes to education. But I'm a career educator. I dedicated my life's work in 1995, when I left college, to do this. My father-in-law served on the school board for 12 years. So I got to watch him from that perspective as well. So I bring a slightly different perspective to the chair. So I'm going to cover several different things with you all, and I'll add in a few things off-script as well that I think are pertinent to each one of you. So the mission for the Northeast is we challenge and encourage each student to achieve and demonstrate academic excellence, technical skills, and responsible citizenship. Northeast is about 140 square miles. And so to give you, if you do not know, the north area of the city, which is 281 right up close to the Comal Line, and then we come down just inside Loop 410. That means we're a very diverse population. We have approximately 64,500 students. And we have undergone a lot of change over the last 15 years, demographics, in our district. We are a majority-minority school district now. Approximately 60% of our students are Hispanic, followed then by Anglos, and then African-Americans around 8%, Asians roughly around that. We have approximately 70 campuses. We have two magnet schools. And then we have also 11 magnet programs. To the right, to my right, to your left, are members of my executive staff. Now, I apologize, a few of them are out. One due to a family emergency and two due to work obligations that required some travel. But we are broken up into divisions. So I'd like to introduce Ron Clary. He's the Associate Superintendent for Operations. So he makes sure all the buses, food, custodial, all the maintenance, all the construction projects, that falls under Mr. Clary. To his left is Dan Villarreal. He's our Chief Financial Officer for the school district. He also does our benefits package, which I will tell you is probably the best in the state of Texas for educators. We are one of the few districts that are left self-funded. His people do an amazing job of that. So much so that there are districts in our area that want to join and to join us in that. And we do not allow that because they do such a great job, and they know how our people use the program. So we're very proactive in keeping that. He also, of course, helps with the budget and makes certain that we're spending money wisely and making sure within those laws. And then to his left is the Assistant Superintendent for Campus Administration, Mr. Rudy Jimenez. He is one of the newest members to the team. Mr. Jimenez took the spot that I left vacant. Then to his left would be Dr. Donna Newman. She's the Associate Superintendent for Instruction and Campus Administration. She oversees Rudy. So that division used to be two different ones. Under Dr. Gotardi, he combined Instruction and Campus Administration together. And so they continue to be together today, which is why then to Dr. Newman's left is Anthony Jarrett, who is traveling for work. He is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. Their division is very large. It takes in JROTC, Fine Arts, all the campus teachers, all the campus administrators, all the instructional pieces, HR, special education. It's huge. It's a very large division, but they do a great job of that. And then the last member of my executive staff is Aubrey Chancellor, who is our Executive Director for Communications. And Aubrey's husband works for News4, David Chancellor. And so Aubrey used to be in that business as well, so she brings a great perspective to it. Last but not least is the lady that makes my office hum. I can't do it without Peggy Turner. She is my administrative associate. She does a great job. She manages the calendar. She's really acts not just in managing a lot of the work in the office, but also as a board liaison to the board members. So she keeps track of a calendar and really makes sure that everybody's where they need to be at any given point in time. So she's crucial to the work that we do. So some of the board members, or all of them maybe, spoke about communication. And that's really key for me, is communication. I have tried to work with this board in a very transparent manner when it comes to communication, whether that be text messages, emails, or phone calls. I try to keep them informed because I always remember that you're, as a board member, yes, you're a board member, but you're a community member. And so I'm very acutely aware that people are asking you questions, and they're going to go to you. And so what I like to do is make sure that they're informed. A lot of times, what I share with them, they can't share due to FERPA or other sorts of laws and things that we are regulated by. But at least they know which, then they're coming, they understand what's going on and can maybe alleviate some of the concerns that a constituent would bring forward. I want you to know that, again, I know you're a community member, so I know people are going to come and speak to you. I know they speak to this board right now. Ms. Huey talked about this piece. It actually is legal because it's in my contract. In my contract, there's specific language that states, "If you are, as a board member, brought a concern, you are to refer it to my office first to look into." That's very crucial. Oftentimes, something gets, something happens. And we're a large organization, so there's always issues. There always are. But oftentimes, what people are told is not the entire truth. And so my job and my staff's job is we dig into it. And we look into, and if something was wrong, we admit that we're wrong. And we work on that. And I think they would attest to that. But if there wasn't anything, what we try to do is tell the other side of the story, as Paul Harvey would say, "the rest of the story." And so I just want you all to know that. We also give each board member an iPad. We give them a district email account. And we also provide them with this, a badge, that opens up the keyless entries into our schools. So the iPad, the calendar access is all governing that, and you have that. That badge, though, remember that, and I'm a parent. When I show up to Lopez Middle School as a parent, I do not use my badge to buzz in. I go through the normal process, which, by the way, always freaks the people out at the door. But it's imperative that they separate my role within the district and me as a parent. And so that's the same that I ask of the board, is that if you're there in... Because if you're on a campus, Peggy Turner or myself should know. And then we schedule those things and make sure that people know that you're coming. But there should be business that you're conducting at the campus. Let's see. I often communicate with the board through text message, as I stated, especially in moments of crisis. So you brought up what happened at Reagan High School. So there were a lot of texts that day. It's important to note, whether that's on your own personal device or not, it is open to, open records. So you really need to be very mindful of that, that that communication is subject to anyone wishing to see it, whether it's on your own device or the district's device. Mrs. Grona mentioned that the confidentiality of information, that's crucial. In order for me to be transparent with the board, I have to know that things that are being said are being kept confidential. That allows us to be very transparent both ways. If information is being shared, whether it's in closed, from closed session, which it shouldn't ever be, or whether it's something that I sent through a text, what I always ask the board to do is think, whatever was through text, think of that as just as closed session. And you shouldn't be sharing that information with the general public. That's really the backbone of how I operate with this Board of Trustees. I think they've noticed that is a very big difference, is that I try to be very transparent about what we're doing and why we're doing it and allow for the questions and things that doesn't bother us. The staff knows that as well, that we don't have that issue as long as things are being dealt with confidential. If it's a matter of public, it's going to be out here in the public. Other than that, we try to treat everything as confidential. They all spoke about board meetings and dates and times. And I will, I appreciate the board's flexibility because not always, things like an unexpected vacancy has come up at a principalship, maybe. And it's, we've interviewed and we're ready to recommend someone, but there's not a board meeting for three weeks. Well, we need to get that in. And so we always ask the board to work with us in being flexible. And sometimes that's a 7:30 in the morning meeting. Sometimes that's at a noon meeting. Sometimes that's at 5:00. Sometimes it's on Monday, but sometimes it's on Wednesday or Friday morning. So it really depends on their flexibility. But I always appreciate that and understanding that we're trying to get business done, and we simply cannot do some business without the board's approval. Flexible and awake. That's right. So, let's see. I've told you all that stuff. And Ms. Grona has told you that. One thing that we tried very hard to do for board members is to get presentations, so large presentations that are coming to you, we try to get them a week in advance for board members to review. The board, the agenda and the packet goes out final on Friday before the Monday board meeting. So we try to give you some time to look it over. The one thing, and it's not uncommon, I may get a phone call over the weekend. I understand when I agreed to take this job and they voted, is that I'm on call 24/7. And I do try to do that. Understand I do have children myself, and sometimes I'm a dad. So there may be a delay in there on a communication just for a little bit, as last night was when I was at my son's pole vault practice meet. So there... But again, I try very diligently to get back with board members with questions or anything like that. They talked about attendance at board meetings. I wanted to know how many. I'm fairly new to this position, so I kind of looked back. Peggy and I actually took a look at board meetings over the last few years. So three years ago, there were 30 board meetings that year. Last year, there were 25. This year, we've had 19 to date. We've had a lot. And so the one thing with that, that I always ask these board members, is please be in attendance. Because when you're not in attendance, again, we're talking about a lot of things, whether it's in closed session, whether it's out here. I'm trying to keep you informed. And absences, what happens is people have to call me, or they call staff, or I have to call them because they were absent. And it's taking away from the day-to-day operations that we're really trying to do in Northeast. Ms. Huey, you spoke to that. You know, we're trying to keep this machine running and running efficiently and effectively. And so being present each board meeting is greatly appreciated because it will help you as a board member, and it helps us continue to do the work that we do each time. So let's go into electronic communication and resources. Deb Caldwell, our Director for Governmental Relations, that I believe all of you met when you came in to apply, is going to be the driver behind me on the screen because I'd like for her to show you some things as I speak about them. So I'm pretty certain that all of you have gone to the Northeast ISD website at some point. And so we're going to go through, Deb, yep, over to the Board of Trustees, so you'll see right there where that is. And I promised Deb I would give her time to find everything on it that I wouldn't just keep talking. And so you can see here where the board meetings are listed. Deb, if you'll find that. There's the agendas. And so you can click in there and find your notice. Again, though, for board members, they always get this information Friday before. Deb, if you'd go back one for me, one more, I believe. No, right there. If you'll click on the 1920 Regular and Special Board Meetings list. So that is there, but understand that that's very fluid. So again, depending on what is going on, is whether that's being changed. So it's not set in stone, is the point to my message, is those can be called. We can add ones in there. Those special ones, we always have for grievances and things like that that may be coming through the system. So sometimes we do, but sometimes we don't. May and June are very busy because of the budget. Last year's budget was very difficult because House Bill 3 hadn't even yet passed. And so we are one of the first districts in the area. We have a July 1 adoption, a budget cycle. And so many of the other districts don't do that, which is great for us. When we switched over to that, we saved a lot of money. But it also puts us going very early. And most districts around us watch very carefully to see what we're going to do first, and then they take action second. So that's one of those pieces to it. So Deb, if you don't mind going back, we'll show you where the board operating procedures are. So you can see here, the board does have, as Mrs. Grona spoke about, the ethics for school boards. I encourage you to read through these procedures. This is really what governs the work, how they operate. So take some time and read through those. If we can answer any questions as you go through, absolutely, we're going to do our best to answer any questions that you have. Deb, if you go to the policy manual now, so you can see here, there's our board policies. So all policies are online and open to the public. There are two ways to find them. If you know the policy code, you can type it directly into where it says "go to policy." If you're just not sure what it is, you could go up and just type it into search, and it will direct you through. There are legal policies and there are local policies. The legal is set by the state through TASB. They're really, they're legal. That's what we're to do. The local policy is what the board takes action on. So what we do as the district, we bring proposals forward with language that we feel believes that differs slightly from legal. And then we ask the board, as Mrs. Grona said, they do one reading to answer questions. Then we bring it back for a second reading. And on that second reading, if the board votes to adopt it, then it goes into our policy book. Mrs. Turner, who's absent, she makes sure that those things are uploaded into TASB and that you all are aware of all of those changes. And then campaign finance reports. I gotta make sure I read this. So, how come I lost that? Now, here we go. Campaigns, finance reports, so for all the candidates, are posted for each election. The 30-day report is due by April the 2nd. So you will file that report in the exact same place where you filed for your candidacy, on the sixth floor. So just go on up there. We will call for Deb. Deb will come out, take receipt of it, and then we will make sure that it's posted online for you. I spoke about board email. Everybody will have that board email, you know, whoever's sitting on the board, they will have a board email. We do use that. Most times, I don't use that for emergencies or things that are really urgent that you know. That's more for, "This event is coming up. This school has invited board members to attend. Would you like to attend?" TASB training is coming up. Do you need us to schedule a room for you? Do you need us to help you with the selection? of the sessions that you plan to attend? More low-key type of things come through email. I'll use text for the things that I need you to know of quickly. And then, I spoke about the board calendar. There is a calendar. Mrs. Turner does that for you. So she will send it out and you will always see all the events that are going on in the district. Anything that, what we try very hard to do is explain what that event is in the calendar. But I think Ms. Williams, Mr. Byer, Mr., well, no, not Mr. Laos, you're a teacher. But those two folks and, you know, some of the language that we use in education isn't, it's specific to education. And so you may not know what that is. So we just ask, shoot me a text, give Peggy an email. We'll explain it and whether that. Oftentimes, I think the most often question I get is, is it required for us to be there? Sometimes, no. Sometimes I say, I think it's really good that you're there. This is an event. It's an important event in the district. And I think all of you being there shows a great deal of support from the board to our campus, to our program, and so forth. So with that, I think it's any questions that you all may have?
Turn my mic on. Yeah. Does anybody, yes?
There were a number of references to different ethics. There were a number of references to different ethics rules. Can you tell us where to go to find those guidelines? Is it consolidated in one place? Is it spread over different codes, like the Texas Administrative Code?
Go ahead, sir.
Well, I was gonna say, what Deb was just showing you earlier on policies. You can put in ethics there and that'll pull up a lot of it. But then I think our board operating procedures cover a lot of it. And that's really great. TASB is our helpmate, our, I don't know how we would survive without TASB. So anything, anytime it comes to policy, you can even directly communicate with TASB. And they have their own legal department that can help you with any ethics issues.
And they will be happy to answer your questions.
To add on to that, we had a training session in the fall. We had someone come in and speak to us on ethics and social media and speaking to the press. And he basically reminded us that, you know, we are not, we are no, you are no longer just a parent. You are a political figure. You are a political figure because there's an election. But not that we're, it's not about politics. But only, I say political only because it holds, we hold an election to have this office. My point being, anything that you put on social media that could be offensive to anybody that you're representing in this district needs to come down. It may not seem offensive to you. You really have to go in to look at your own accounts and ask yourself, is this offensive to somebody that I am representing? Do they trust me enough by looking at my social media pages on what I have here? Everybody, not just your friends and family. Because people are going to search you and look for, I mean, I'm sure you've, they've searched you and looked for you already since you've put your name in the hat and you, you know, showed up in the paper. And so, you think you're safe. And then you go back and you start looking through and something that seemed very playful and it, you know, it isn't. It's a reminder to know that all eyes are always on you. And the great part is, all of our eyes are on each other. We hold each other accountable all the time. It's not a secret. We had, you know, Mr. Laos is here because we had a board member that could not abide by our board operating policies. And we held him to the carpet. We are checks and balances for each other. And if we do, if we see one of us nearing that line, and I'm fortunate, we are so fortunate enough to say, and I'm so proud to say that I've not had, we haven't had that issue with the seven of us. But it, it's something to think about as well when you're reviewing your social media pages and how you relay information. And, you know, somebody will make a post that's not true. I can't respond. None of us can respond.
Did Dr. Mike?
Yeah, so. Can you say your last name for me so I say it right?
Holcher.
Holcher. I'm sorry. I don't know why I'm struggling with your name, but for some reason. So, if you go to the board policy manual and you go to BBF Local, that will talk to you about the Board of Ethics, or the Ethics for the Board. And then also, you can read the Board, Board Operating Procedures. Thank you. I drew a blank. Those, yeah, sure. Those are really what you need to read. So BBF Local and the Board Operating Procedures. That will really, I think, address what you're looking for specifically. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Sure. And just one thing that kind of came to me, wasn't mine, so I won't take credit for it. But in some ways leveraging off of what Mrs. Winkley was just saying about conducting ourselves out there in social media, but just in general. And I think it goes to what others have said before that, you know, it's hard to, all at the same time, be a public servant and be self-serving. Those two, you know, it just doesn't happen simultaneously. You know, we're out there, each one of us, as we've said, and you all have enumerated why you seek the office and why we, why we did. And so, it's really all for the greater good. We try to keep that top of mind when we come here. And, you know, again, while we're all elected out of single-member districts, we do serve, we do serve the entire district. And that too is always, you know, top of mind for us as we're preparing and as we cast our vote.
I think the ethics of the board too is extremely important to all of us, like Sandy was talking about. With a prior board member who chose not to, who made bad choices. And it was an extremely difficult time for us to recognize that and hold him accountable. Our reputation as Northeast ISD School Board is very well-known throughout the state. We are known as a high-functioning, highly ethical board. And when that situation happened, we all had numerous calls from acquaintances. I in particular, because I'm a TASB director, because I'm on the coalition of school boards, which was actually set up to model ethical, functional school boards. And I was a founding member of that. So there were, there were a lot of questions about what we were doing. So that board ethics, that's a huge factor of who we are and what we do. It is, it's vital to our soul, to who we are as a school board. It's just like, we were talking earlier. I think just one of you is a parent in the district now? Just you, Mr.?
I am.
You are?
I'm a parent in the district.
No, I mean, I'm sorry, children in our schools is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah.
Okay, so we have.
Sorry, I didn't say that earlier.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't catch it.
I wrote it in so good Lopez for me.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't say that.
I didn't catch that. I didn't know if they were.
I didn't say it. I love them, but I didn't say it.
So you have children attending our schools and you have children attending them. So that's, that's a really important topic.
I have children.
Pardon me? I've got four and 11 grandchildren, so I'll probably beat out everybody on that. Grandchildren is attending the schools? Okay, that's, that's an important point. Because ethically, we do not drop in on schools, ever, 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 ever. That's a huge thing that has brought too many school boards in this county under scrutiny. And that's, we're so passionate about that. We will call Dr. Micah or Peggy and say, I've been invited to this campus. Or this is going on. Is it okay with you if I go to that campus? I mean, I'm a parent. I adore all of these. People say, how many children you have? I say, I have 65,000. It makes me sound busy, but I am, and that's my choice. But thank you so much for asking about ethics, because it's critical.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Mr. Holcher, it real, I mean, for everybody. And these guys know it, but Commissioner Morath of TEA has been taking over many boards because of ethics. That's really why they get in. Things, you know, when I was reading some of these, as Deb put up there, making deals for bids in bathrooms. Gets, that's not a joke. It happens. And the Northeast Independent School District has enjoyed a longstanding board of high ethical standards. And so, it is, though, you know, it does get board members in trouble and arrested. Unfortunately, in our area, TEA has taken over several school districts or is looking at taking them over for problems where the board forgot what their role was and began to, began to try to run the district and not allow the staff to run the district, if that makes sense. I don't want to use those districts' names. I don't. But you can look it up and see. I can tell you, one of the districts right now that's in the news a lot is the largest district in the state, which is Houston ISD. And it's problems. So, that's a great question. And I encourage you to read about them.
Yes, Mr. Osborne?
How does TASB fit into TEA?
You want to go in? It does not. Those are two separate entities. TEA is the Texas Education Agency with a commissioner that's appointed by the governor. And that is a state agency that oversees our school districts legally and things like that. TASB is the Texas Association of School Boards. And every school district in the state has been a member of TASB for over 30 years. So that's 1,031 school districts roughly.
But are they a legal entity?
Are they a legal entity is what he asked.
Yes, uh-huh, yes. They were actually started back in the 1950s. No, they are not under the TEA by any stretch of the imagination. They are, they're own separate.
So, Mr. Osborne, TASB governs boards, TEA governs me.
Does that help?
They govern the district. So all of, all of the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, all of our HR, things like that, TEA is kind of governing that. TASB really governs the board and how they operate.
But they, they're a Texas state agency?
No. No, they are not an agent, they are not, they are not part of the state, state of Texas at all.
How are they a legal entity then?
I'm not, I'm not, maybe it would help you if I explained a little bit about the history of TASB? They were originally started back in the 50s?
No, I'm just concerned with their legal standing with the state of Texas.
Sorry, are you trying to?
They are nonprofit. Basically, they're not established by the legislature, if that helps. It's not, it is not a state agency like the Texas Education Agency. They are.
Highways or parks.
Right. It's not, so it's not established by the legislature. If, I don't know if that's kind of how the question was directed, but it's.
That's what I was.
Yeah, okay.
No, it has never been part of the state. Although it was created because of issues that the state put on our school districts back in the 50s. The state mandated that school districts start carrying workman's comp, which at the time was not a norm. However, not surprisingly, they didn't fund it. And some smaller districts in particular had a huge challenge with trying to do workman's comp. So several of them banded together to do workman's comp. Today, the biggest part of what TASB does is risk management for school districts. They also, we have a buyer's buying co-op, which our district participates in, which gives us a huge rebate every year, which is really cool, which is basically exactly what it says. A buying co-op, where districts have banded together to get buying deals. There's an energy co-op. There's a legal assistance fund. There's multiple things, but probably the biggest part is policy that helps. They will take what the legislature passes down to us and parse it and distill it for us and write the policy that the state has mandated.
But I would say that TASB is a legally formed entity that was legally formed in the state of Texas for the purpose of which they conduct the particular business that Sandy mentioned.
But they are not a state agency like TEA. Yeah.
In some ways, the way I like to think about it is that if, so if you would take, you know, whatever your profession is, if there's like a trade organization that, you know, works, let's say if you're in the insurance industry and there might be a trade organization that works with that or, you know, I'm in banking and there's, gosh, I was in commercial banking forever and I've already forgotten the, how quickly we forget. But, so like, so like, I serve in investment banking. And so we have something called the Municipal Advisory Council. They are a trade organization for us. We lean on them for certain things. And so, TASB basically, as Mrs. Huey said, provides a lot of those services to the school boards. They have resources. And particularly where, you know, you would look at us and we are a large district. There are a lot of resources at our disposal that we just have. But if you might be a Single A school district in, let's say, Atascosa County, you may not have access to all those things at your fingertips. And so TASB, you can lean on TASB and, as a resource. Most boards do.
Other questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
Did that help it, Mr. Osborne? Did that help explain a little bit?
Well, it sounds like we have the Texas Society of Professional Engineers.
That would be similar.
But then we have the Texas Board of Professional Engineers, which is a legal entity. And there's the ones that we have to follow. We have legal, we have ethical requirements with kids Peggy comes up with. And IEEE and other different organizations. But then we have the legal requirements that the state came up with that the Texas Board of Professional Engineers administers. But TASB is not that organization.
But they're a great organization. And like Tony was saying, there's a lot of smaller districts that could not survive without it. We do not use all of the services that TASB offers. We don't need to, but smaller districts. Because, I'm not sure if you're aware, but there's some districts in Texas that may not even have 200 students. So they don't have anything like what we can offer our students. And TASB is their lifeline, sort of like the regions, the education service centers.
Other questions? Yes?
I don't know if this is the appropriate place to ask, or y'all could show me how I can find out the information. But I saw like the statement on the goal of the students. And I saw one that says, teach them responsible citizenship. Three of my boys are Eagle Scouts. So that citizenship in the community, in the nation, in the world, all had to be taught. And so I was just wondering, how do I, how are the kids being taught this? Or how do I find out how the students are being taught responsible citizenship?
It's, go ahead. So, Ms. McGinty, for the purpose of candidate orientation tonight, no, but I can help you find that answer.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
But for tonight, sure. Yeah, absolutely. No, that's no problem. I can, when we're finished, if you'll speak with me, I'll help you find it. Okay? Yes?
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Osborne?
You said that we, the trustee would get a package on Friday for the Monday meeting. When do the citizens get that information?
The agenda is posted on Friday. So it's online and they can access that. The packet that goes with it is.
The agenda and the packet, the corresponding items that go with it are posted on the, on 72 hours before the meeting. So it's posted online and then it's posted out here. Does that help?
Anything else? Yes, go ahead.
The special meetings that were listed?
Yes.
Are those closed meetings?
Go ahead. It depends on what it is.
It just depends on what, what items are on it. So if it's a grievance, yes, it will be closed. If it is.
If it's posted just as a. If it's supposed to just as a special meeting, it's not a closed meeting?
Not necessarily, no, sir. So we could have a special meeting to hire a principal, which would be in public. But again, if it's a grievance, or if it's some type of litigation that has to be heard, that's going to be a closed, a closed session.
If it will be noted?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Maybe define the difference between what we can talk about in closed, to an executive, that there's, we're very limited on what we can talk about.
Right. We're very limited in, it's usually personnel, or pending or possible litigation, or the exchange or purchase of real property, or those items that we normally speak of in the back. If there's something different that I need to make the board aware of, that is not falling under one of those categories, then we will explicitly state it on the agenda, that there's something different going to be discussed back in closed session. So again, it's all about being transparent to the public, I think is what, maybe, Mr. Osborne, you're alluding to, and so we have to be very transparent, to know what's being conducted as business. The constituents of the Northeast Independent School District have a right to know what's being decided at the meetings. So, so Ms. Huey said about FERPA.
I'm sorry, FERPA is a huge piece of what we have to be very, very, very aware of. So.
Yeah, that's the Family Educational Rights to Privacy Act, which protects it.
And that's a federal, yeah, that's a federal law, so.
I know.
David. That means that we don't, not that we don't, we can't, but we don't share personal information about a child, or anything going on with that child, ever, ever, ever.
Okay, anything else? All right, well, I want to thank you, or did you have something? I'm sorry, looked like you were getting ready to speak. I want to thank you all for being here, we appreciate that y'all all made it to attend the orientation. I hope that it was helpful, and that it provided you some information. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to let us know. So I'm gonna adjourn this portion of the meeting at 7:06, and then we're going to item, so y'all are welcome to leave.
Or stay at the board meeting.
Two minutes.
Yes, you can.
Ms. McGinty.
Yes, you can have to. Yes.